Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming into this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Michael Porter from Twine Memorial Holy Temple? And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, good evening.
Good evening. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Most gracious Father, we thank you for your loving kindness, how you bless us throughout the day to assemble together on this evening. God, we pray thy blessing. We thank you for grace and mercy that have escorted us throughout another day. We pray, Lord, upon this council and the citizens of this city, we ask thy blessing and thy covering. Father, we thank you for bringing us through many dangers, toils, and snares. But we thank you, dear God, we know that unity is very important, that we come together for one cause and one place. We pray against all violence, all racialities, Lord, and all those things that would divide us. We pray to be united and that you will bless us, dear God, by your divine hand of mercy. Lord, we love you, we honor you, we shall ever give your name the praise. Thank you, dear God, for blessing us to excel over the challenges that we are faced with during this time and day in which we live. We thank you, dear God, and we know that you are God of blessing and judgment. And we pray, dear God, that we do things right and in a godly order. Lead us, Father, throughout these trials, challenges, and trying times in which we live. And we thank you, dear God, that we can call upon you, Lord, when we are tried and going through such challenges as this. Thank you, Father, for being our Lord and our God. We ask thy continued blessing upon your people and this vast city of Portsmouth and the government that governs our land. These and all other blessings we ask, in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Porter. And before you take your seat, I want you to come up and give us an update. I understand the cathedral is open, and maybe you want to share a few words. I think your last time here, you were in the building stages and things are complete. And when can council come?
Yes.
I think we're in need of prayer. So you might be the guy.
We are blessed to have finished our new sanctuary at 710 Godwin Street. The previous building was 106 years old this October coming. And we're celebrating, we are glad at what the Lord has done, and we thank God for the city and the prayers and the blessings. And we just plan to be a beacon in the community, to be a blessing as God see fit. So thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your leadership. Appreciate it. Okay, members of City Council, if you would indicate your presence electronically, please.
Six members of council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of July 26, 2016, and a regular meeting of July 26, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption. Second.
I have a correction.
Okay. Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir. The minutes reflect our closed session that we interviewed someone for a board or commission appointment, and that actually did not happen. Should be removed from the minutes.
No, no, no. So moved.
That's correct. I think we've mentioned that to the...
They were a no-show, is what happened.
No. They were here. We... They came and we took care of it. Yeah, we can make the minutes reflect that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. Any other corrections to the minutes? All right. None? We're in need of a motion?
We have a motion.
We have the motion?
Need a second.
We need a second?
Second.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. You will be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, 6-0.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
16-2... 16-248. Presentations. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Will the City of Portsmouth Fellowship and intern participants please come forward? Just line up right in front of you. Scroll all the way down. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as they are taking their place in the front of the dais. One of the priorities of City Council has been investing in lifelong learning and provide opportunities for our young citizens. The Fellowship and Internship Program debuted on April 29, 2016. The program is designed to provide a professional environment where students and graduates could gain meaningful work experience in local government as they continue their education and prepare for their life careers. With the ability to partner with host departments, they have the opportunity to apply theories, concepts, techniques, in actual work situations, participate in essential projects, gain transferable skills, and learn the rewards of collaboration, information sharing, and knowledge exchange. Due to school schedules, most of the fellows and interns will complete the program and return to school this month. And I must say that some have already returned to school. We're able to retain a handful to stay with the program until the end of 2016 calendar year. Mayor and members of City Council, I present to you the first class of Fellowship and intern participants for the City of Portsmouth.
Well done. Tess, all right. I understand we have two brave souls that want to give us a brief summary of your experience. And they might be Dr. Patton?
Mrs. Gooden, who are they? I'm Ms. Perkins.
All right. Step on up. Come on up here. Get on the limelight. And who else?
I have a question.
Okay, great. And you can't say ditto. Whoever goes first, the second one can't say ditto. All right.
All right. Well, I would like to say at first, thank you for this opportunity. It's absolutely amazing. And working here in this internship has been an opportunity that I don't think a lot of people are going to be able to have. And the ability to use concepts that you've used in the academic setting and put them in the real-world application to actually help your city is something that I don't think a lot of people have been able to do. And I look forward to doing it until 20... the end of 2016.
Now, where did you work? With the department?
Oh, I'm with the Department of Engineering.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Shakista Sumery Caldwell, and I worked in the Human Resource Department as a Human Resource Intern. I would like to first just thank the City of Portsmouth for this opportunity, as well as the Human Resource Department. My situation was a little bit different from, I guess, some of the interns. I just actually, last week, completed my master's in Human Resource Management. Thank you. The field that I work in, Human Resource Management, is a really closed field and a closed-door field. And what I mean about that is, it's really hard to get in it if you don't have any work experience. So I was really excited and really thankful to the city and also the Human Resource Department just to give me the opportunity to be able to work in the field and to be able to learn and grow about, you know, human resources policies and procedures and HR systems. You know, I will always take this experience with me as I learn and grow. And the City of Portsmouth will always be, you know, my family, my first HR family. So, you know, I want to say thank you to, you know, everyone in the city. Thank you, you know, to the City Council, the City of Portsmouth, and the HR Department for giving me the opportunity to learn and go and giving me a chance, which is something that I really needed, you know, as an intern and a growing professional, a chance to learn and grow. So thank you very much.
Okay. Well, we want to thank each and every one of you as you wrap up your summer and head back to school. I think I got an invitation the other day. I'm going to judge over at...
Churchill Primary.
Churchill and Primary. And what am I judging?
So the kids are making a business plan to present. They're just... they're elementary kids, but we're teaching them... we taught them while we're there a week ago, we taught them about business and marketing. So they're going to present their business proposal to the mayor.
Okay. All right. All right, great. Well, again, thank you very much.
And Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we have each one of them do something themselves and tell us where to go to school or what they don't?
Yeah, why not? Let's do that. Let's start over here. Nice and loud and clear.
Hi, everyone. I'm Calvin Boone. I go to IC Norfolk, and I'll be completing it in January.
Good evening. My name is Lonell Wiggins, and this fall I will be attending Old Dominion University.
Hi, everybody. I'm India Owens, and this fall I'll be a sophomore at Norfolk State, and I worked in the library department.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Cotts. I just graduated from Woodjowison High School, and I will be attending Norfolk State in the fall.
Hi, I'm Darren Dixon. I'm a rising senior at Old Dominion University, and I'll be graduating this coming spring. And I'm interning at the IT department.
Hello, I'm Rayquan Thomas, and I am a junior at James Madison University.
Hello, my name is Laquita Rogers. I intern with the Department of Social Services. I attend Todd Water Community College, and I will be graduating in December.
Hi, my name is Julia Jenkins. I'm a freshman at Greensboro College, and I worked with Parks and Recreation Services.
Hi, my name is Mariah Jenkins. I'm a senior at Rafferty University.
Hello, my name is Tanshala Randall. I'm a senior at Old Dominion University, and I interned at Department of Social Services, the CPS Department.
Hi, my name is Kiana Rogers. I attend Indiana Institute of Technology. I'll be an upcoming sophomore, and I interned at the VHS Behavioral Healthcare Services in the shop.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Dunston, and I intern in the Department of Public Works, and I just graduated from Chauvin University.
Hello, my name is Tariq Vincent. I attend Norfolk State University, and my department was Public Works, Stonewater.
Good evening. My name is Akia Davis. I attend IC Norfolk High School. I'm a rising senior, and I worked in Parks and Rec.
Hi, my name is Darius Wardis. I'm a rising senior at Churchill High School, and I'm an intern at the City Manager's Office.
Hello, my name is Alonso Baxter. I'm an intern in Finance, and I'm a senior at Old Dominion University.
Hey, everybody again. I am an intern in the HR department, and I go to American Public University, and I just graduated my master's in Human Resource Management.
My name is Mariah Coker. I intern with Parks and Recreation, and I will be attending Chauvin University this fall.
Hello, my name is Aika Cobar. I intern with the Department of Social Services, Energy Fuel Assistance Department. I attend Norfolk State University and will be graduating in December.
Hello, my name is Rashad Winston. I'm a senior at Norfolk State University. I am interning in the Department of Engineering.
Hi, I'm Brittany Collins. I'm interning with the Department of Engineering. I'm an Old Dominion student.
Hi, my name is Tanisha Griffin, and I graduated from Todd Water Community College, and I intern for the Department of Social Services Finance Department.
Just to close, I'm Larry T. Grant, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dr. Patton, department heads, especially Ms. Kelly. Thank you for allowing us, as interns, to see what a city can do. The most important mission of a city is to deliver services. And we thank you so very much, the citizens of Portsmouth, this fine opportunity. Thank you.
All right, let's give them a hand. Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much. Okay, a group photo. All right, come on in. Let's do that. Mr. Pace, and he said, "Come on in. Let's suck it in. Come on, come on." We're going to touch. That's right. Get up front. Come on. Let me help you. Do like this. Yeah, there you go. There we are. Where are we, all in? Good? A little bit more. Somebody else tell... Looking good. You want to get up front? How about this? Come on, come on. You better... You come back here with the mayor. There you go. All right. How's that? Right? Come on in. A little bit closer. Baby, right? All right, great job, guys. Thank you all very much. And they're going to be exiting out of the chamber. Just want to thank each and every one of you for participating this summer. And as Dr. Patton mentioned, we want to also thank our taxpayers. This is one of the initiatives that we wanted to implement. This is, as she said, our first year. We're hoping next year this will double. I think we had a total of 31, okay? We advertised. We told everyone that applied, we would hire. I think I had about 30 to call after the deadline and said I didn't hear about it. So maybe they'll tune in at this station and understand how important it is to stay engaged with the city, because this is just the first of many things to come. I think when Dr. Patton first came... Oh, during the interview. That's right. During the interview session, we talked about a lot of our employees. And as we look at our annual awards banquet, and a lot of our employees that stood up that have been working here 20, 30, and 40 years, a lot of them started as interns. And it was a program that we had in this city years ago that we had gotten away from. So again, to the taxpayers, to City Council members and the manager, thank you for getting this thing up and running, and let's hope we can do more next year. Thank you all very much.
We will now have presentations of special appellate pins to newly appointed board and commission members. Would the following persons please meet? Councilman Edmonds, down at the podium. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Katrina Drew. Community Criminal Justice Board, Velvet Smith. History Commission, David Stevenson. Historic Preservation Commission, Roderick Madison. Music and Fine Arts Commission, Dee Ivan Rodden IV. Parks and Recreation Commission, Willie White, Jr. Portsmouth Parking Authority, Janelle Hoffler and Pamela Wilkins. Social Services Advisory Commission, Melvina Sneed. And Wetlands Board, Jennifer Monument.
All right, let's give them a hand as they...
We are happy, glad that you decided to apply and be selected to our board or commission. And it's a great opportunity for you to learn how the business matters flow in the City of Portsmouth, one of the greatest cities in the world.
Amen.
Amen, somebody.
Amen.
And so we're glad that you thought that way, too. And that's why you have applied. Give it all you got, and it'll give all back to you of what our city is about, so that one day you will be set in behind where you're standing. Amen.
Amen.
And so I'm going to let you introduce yourself to everyone. This is a grand opportunity. We are very appreciative of what you've done by applying and being accepted.
Hello, my name is Katrina Drew. I'm a regional coordinator for Virginia Support Services, Virginia Home-Based Counseling, which we provide mental health support, skill-building, and intensive in-home counseling.
Good evening. I'm Velvet Smith, and I'm a special education teacher here in the City of Portsmouth. I've been working here for 12 years.
Hi, my name is David Stevenson. I'm an owner and photographer of the Stevenson... I am a native of Portland.
Hello, I'm Roderick Madison. I work for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. I've been there close to 19 years. I'm just here to serve this city.
My name's Ivan Rodden. I'm a professor up at Christopher Newport University, and I just really love the City of Portsmouth and glad to be able to serve.
Hello, my name is Will White. I'm in the IT field, and I've been coaching and in the Parks and Rec Department in different cities for going on 20 years, and just want to continue to help the city.
My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I work at Portsmouth Department of Social Services and the Employment Services Unit. And I was born and raised in Portsmouth. I love Portsmouth, and I want to see Portsmouth go forward, and I would love to be a part of that.
Amen.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Hoffler. I'm currently a revenue agent in the Commission of Revenue's Office for the City of Virginia Beach. I have roots in Portsmouth, family, friends. I'm excited about serving the citizens of my hometown.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Monument. I'm currently working as the Marketing Manager for Dollar Tree Stores. Everything's still a dollar. Come on now. And we're getting one at London Plaza, so that's cool. And previous to that, I worked both for the Nature Conservancy and for the Virginia Zoo. And I'm very interested in everything that our beautiful city has in terms of our natural resources and preserving and protecting those, as well as helping to develop our city and aiding our citizens. So I'm very excited to be on the Wetlands Board. And I'm a proud graduate of Churchill High School. Thanks.
Croakers.
My name is Melvina Sneed. I'm currently unemployed. I am a previous employee of Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Court. I am a citizen of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you.
My colleagues and I would like to thank you very much for giving of your time, your talent, and other things that we might require from you. Pull up your sleeves, get ready, get ready. Portsmouth is waiting for you. All right.
Great job, Bishop. All right, Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light... I'm sorry. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of your three minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her remarks. Public hearing, 16-249, Public Hearing on Rezoning and Use Permit Applications. UP 16-05 Ebony Heights. Raquel Owens requests a use permit for a family-child daycare home at 3511 Pierce Street to care for up to 12 children under the age of 13 years old. The comprehensive plan, generalized future land use map, recommends low-to-medium-density residential development. Vision principle of robust and prospering economy and enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Wright. Vice Mayor Simmons, members of City Council, good to be for you again this evening. As was just read, this is a use permit application for a family-child care home in the Ebony Heights neighborhood. The property is located at 3511 Pierce Street. The applicant currently operates a center that takes care of five children, but would like to move to a larger daycare operation of 12, which would require both a use permit as well as licensing from the state. Again, the property is located in Ebony Heights. As you can see from the site plan, which shows the house, shows the fenced-in play area to the backyard, and shows the parking area to the front. Primary things we look at in the use permit process would be sufficient parking and, again, the enclosed outdoor play area, which is a standard of our use permit applications. We've reviewed this application and concluded that it meets the zoning requirements for both the parking and the outdoor fenced area. However, still requires the use permit consideration by City Council. And with that, the Planning Commission, that they're meeting on July 5th, by a vote of four to one, voted to recommend approval subject to five conditions. Those five conditions of use permit are included in your agenda materials. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any about this application.
Okay. Questions? Comments? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Joanne Clark.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and the City Manager. My name is Joanne Clark. I live in the Churchill area of the city. I previously, earlier today, sent you all some email regarding this item that I was in opposition with, but I decided to come on down anyway. So I wanted to address a very important issue with you that's not really just approaching this one issue. The applicant does a wonderful job. All of our childcare providers within this city provide a wonderful service that's much needed, and that's not what I'm opposed to. They have a wonderful yard. They've complied with everything they need to do in zoning. But there is an issue here that if you keep adding these up all over the city, it means that more services are going to need from social services. This particular applicant will need a social services licensing. And my question is, is there a sunset clause to this permit? Is there a certain amount of time that you allow this person to have a permit to have the 12 children to be supervised for a duration of time? Will someone go in and have some oversight with the licensing? Will they go back and review the project to see if it's been complied with? This adds on more stress to our already overburdened social services, and this is my concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bob, can you address that, please?
Sure. First question about the permit. The use permit itself has a two-year timeframe in which the applicant has to meet all the other requirements, go through the social services licensing process before they can operate. So they have to meet that requirement, as well as the other conditions, which would be the parking and the fencing. So there is a two-year timeframe for them to get all of that licensing. Once that's done, the use permit becomes permanent unless the use is abandoned. In other words, if the applicant stops providing the service there, again, you have a two-year timeframe in which the use permit would become null and void. Council obviously has the authority to revoke if you get in a situation where there are egregious violations that you want to address. We also have typical zoning enforcement if we have violations of the zoning requirements. As far as the interior of the site, all the social services requirements, we don't go inside the building. The city's responsibility is to use permit the exterior. All the interior operations, compliance with the operation from the inside of the building, that's the state's authority under social services, and we don't get involved in that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Do you have the picture that you showed the Planning Commission of the home?
Of...
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Yes, she is here.
Okay. My question is going to be for her.
Okay. She's here.
We can bring her up if you want. Let's bring her up now, if you would. Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilman Chair, you got the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. My question is, I'm thinking back to the Planning Commission meeting, and you said that it was confined to the garage area that's been converted?
Yes, my garage's been converted.
So what's the square footage on that? Because you're talking about putting 12 kids in there.
I don't know the square footage.
So is that the standard for, like a four-by...
It's a two and a half car garage. I don't know how big that is. But is it... I put heat and air in it, and a fence in the backyard.
Yes, that just seems like maybe quite a few kids for garage. Now, other question is, looking at the cars, what it says now, how is the turnaround and pickup going to work? Because that's a dead-end street. So how do parents going to traverse to pick up their kids and turn around and get back out?
Because that silver car is my daughter's car, and she don't live with me. And I explained to them that they can't park in the driveway anymore.
So nobody's going to be parking in the driveway?
No. It's just going to be that truck in the driveway.
Because when I... Because you have a van, right?
Yes, I park my van on the street.
Okay, so now a street, so, all right. It's going to be difficult. I'm just trying to imagine, if your van is on the street and there's a car on the other side of the street, that's not a wide street.
No, but my van is up against the fence of the post office.
So you park at the post office?
No, up against the fence of the post office, out the way.
Okay, I can't visualize that. Okay.
It's like a grassy area.
Yeah, I know. I've been by there. I'm just trying to visualize where on the side of that fence is where you're going I'm just trying to visualize where on the side of that fence is where you're going to park a van, I can't...
That whole side, across the street from my house. It's a grassy area.
Okay.
And I just park my van on the...
That belongs to the post officer, right? That grassy area you're talking about, right behind the post office?
Right behind it, but it's a fence.
Belongs to the house right across...
It don't belong to nobody. There's no house, there's just one house sitting right there.
It's got to belong to somebody.
Oh, I guess the post office, but it's a fence that divides it.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
I think I know what you're talking about. If you turn on your street, the post office to the right, there's a fenced area, there's a house on the cross street from you. You're saying there's a grassy lot right between or behind?
Come down a little bit.
Come down a little further?
Like when you turn on my street, there's a house on the left, and then there's just a grassy area. There's a fence, like the post office, the back of the shopping center.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, so have you already been raided by social services? I haven't come in yet and say that that room is good for twelve people, that hasn't happened yet?
Yes, I'm a volunteer registered daycare provider now.
Okay, I'm saying, but how about for the number of kids, how's that work?
Yes, they came in and inspected my daycare room.
Okay. Was it for five or for twelve?
It was for up to twelve.
Up to twelve.
But I had to go through the zoning first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Mr. Moody, do you have a question for her?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
My concern is the garage. That's a single-car garage?
No, it's a two-car, a two-and-a-half car garage.
Two-and-a-half.
Two-and-a-half?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and you're going to have up to twelve children in there? And how many employees? Up to ten?
Employees?
Mm-hmm.
I have three girls. It's just me and my three girls.
Okay. In here, I see where it says it'll be operated with ten employees. So how many will actually be in that garage with the children?
It's going to be, it depends on how many kids I have at that time, but it's going to be two. Because I could have, if I have up to twelve, then for each five, I have to have a person for each five.
Okay, so you're subject to have fourteen, twelve, fourteen, depending on the number of kids there, but you can have up to twelve?
Right, up to twelve, yes sir.
Okay. And also, I recall saying the playground will be built.
The playground will be what?
Will be constructed outside area? But it's not constructed now?
No, I have a playground area in the backyard.
Okay.
It's fenced in and I have a playground.
I'm just reading from the application where it said that it would be construction, constructed. Can you give us some details on that, Mr. Baldwin?
I believe, Councilman Moody, you might be looking at the next application on your agenda. We have a daycare center that follows us, and that's the one that has the ten employees and will be constructing the outdoor play area.
So you have the playground?
Yes, sir.
But that is your garage here?
Yes, sir.
And you will have up to twelve kids?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Moody, if you look ten or twelve pages into the application, there's an actual diagram of the house. And it shows that the garage is twenty-two by twenty-four. So that's five hundred and twenty-eight square feet for twelve children. So that's like forty square feet per child. Is that right? Is that my right now? That's a little tiny space for twelve children and some adults. And how many children you have in there? You have five children in there now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you go more than double it?
I would like up to twelve, yes ma'am.
And somebody help me again, Mr. Baldwin, that she's already approved... The state says she can have up to twelve in that little, in that amount of space?
Yes, and what she's indicated is she's gone through the state's review, and they've approved her subject to her getting zoning approval.
That's what this state form is I'm looking at in here.
Correct.
Wow. How old do these children get? What, how big are they?
They, well, my oldest is seven, he's in school.
And are we talking cribs also?
Yes.
In five hundred and twenty-eight square feet?
I don't have any infants now, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am, thank you for coming up. Ma'am clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clifford...
That's what Mr. Baldwin something.
Yes, sir.
It's okay.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Baldwin, do we... The process, the state does theirs and then we do ours?
It depends. Sometimes in a case like this where someone has an ongoing daycare operation, in this case with the five, they've requested the state to come and look at twelve, and the state then requires zoning clearance before they will issue their final approval.
So the state is waiting on the...
On the use permit.
So the state has not given approval for twelve yet?
They will wait until the use permit is approved. If you may recall, within the last year or two, we've had a number of use... These daycare centers have come before you.
Which is the way I thought it worked, but I just thought I heard...
Those are very similar circumstances where the state was telling people they need to go get their zoning approvals.
Right, but I thought I heard it was already done, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, the state has done their assessment.
But they haven't given...
They've been approved by the state, but they can't issue the permit until the use permit's been approved by the city. It's a two-piece process.
So...
This used to be separate. And if you go back a few years, the state used to issue their licensing without any information about the city in terms of zoning, and they've changed that process to want to verify the city approves it before they issue the final license.
All right, thank you. Okay, ma'am clerk, yeah.
Mr. Clifford Comback.
Good evening, my name is Clifford Comback, and I live in the Armstead Forest section of Churchland. While I applaud Mrs. Owens' attempt to go through all the hurdles to achieve her goal here, I went by this place this morning, and this street is only about maybe five hundred feet long and the, it looks like there's adequate room to park two cars in the driveway, but according to the minutes from the Planning Commission, she stated that she parked a van in the street. This street is only one lane. It's probably one of the narrowest streets I've seen in the city. And if somebody parks in the street anywhere along there, you can't get a safety vehicle past that point unless you maybe drive in the yards and knock the mailboxes and stuff down. I wish the Planning Commission would do a better picture like of the aerial view and actually use, say, a Google Earth satellite view, because I don't know what kind of, if these are zero lot setbacks or whatever, but there's only about, I'd say, less than ten foot between the houses along that street. And when I was, I wasn't, my primary mission is really not this one, it's the next one. But I read, I went through the Planning Commission's notes and everything, and there was, there was at least, I believe, two letters from the neighbors that weren't real happy about the situation as it is now. And I see that, you know, one of your vision principles on these is the enhanced quality of life. Well, I'm not sure if it enhances the quality of life for the neighborhoods that these are in. According to a list that I got from Virginia Department of Social Services, there's ninety-two child daycare places in Portsmouth, and I'm assuming these are larger places, because I believe under four children, nobody really has to know about them. And twenty-eight of them are located in Churchland. And like I said, I applaud this woman for going through, trying to jump through the hoops, but this is really a bad idea. Mr. Cherry, as you stated, there is, I got to the end of the street and I had to pull into somebody's driveway to turn around. And like I say, the street is only the width of basically one automobile.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir. If you all would indulge me, the folks who may be here in support of this permit, would you raise your hand? Other people here who do not support this permit, would you raise your hand? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, ma'am clerk. Any other speakers?
We have no additional speakers for this item, but it is a public hearing. And if anyone is in the audience that didn't get an opportunity to register to speak and would like to, please come forth, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. This public hearing is closed.
We're in need of a motion. This public hearing is back open. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Walter J. Carter Senior, and I'm here today on a different, not the same thing, Mr. Mayor. It is, it is a...
Sir, you must be speaking on this topic at this time. If not, then you have to wait till later.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Misunderstood.
Uh-huh, very good, thank you very much. All right, this public hearing is closed, and we're in a need of a motion. Dr. Edmonds.
Possibly before we vote on this one way or the other, it would be a good idea for us to get a better view for ourselves before we make a final decision. Because if the street is too small to accommodate the daycare center, then perhaps it might be too small to get safety vehicles down there if a fire breaks out anyway. So I think it'd be a good idea if we would look at this before we make a decision tonight.
So you request that we defer this into the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion to defer, and a second by Vice Mayor Simmons. Mr. Moody?
Well, I agree with my colleague, I think that's a good idea. But my concern too is the number of children in that space. I guess my question to Ms. Owens would be, would she be willing to entertain less children and perhaps cap it at, you know, eight, for example? Which I think would be a much better environment for the children. Can we find out if, maybe if we're going to defer it? I'd like for that conversation to take place.
Let's do that. Since we are about to vote to defer, and I think I'm getting a confirmation from most of the council members, we can, Mr. Baldwin, work that into the equation, so maybe we can find a happy medium. Is that okay with you, Ms.? All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second to defer this item to the next meeting. All in favor, please indicate electronically. All right, ma'am clerk.
This item will be deferred to the next meeting by a vote of six to zero. UP sixteen, UP sixteen dash zero seven, Churchland. The trustees of New Baron Baptist Church request a use permit for a childcare, a child daycare center at thirty-six hundred Bamboo Road. The Comprehensive Plan Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends institutional public development for the property. Vision principle of robust and prospering economy and enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker.
Good evening again, Mayor Wright, members of council. And we'll move up to a larger size facility this time. This is a use permit for a proposed child daycare center for up to fifty children, ages two and a half to twelve. The daycare center would operate from an existing, from the existing church building. You see here on the left, on the right, you will see the location of the site. Site is approximately ten acres in size. You see with the crosshatch, and it's marked as the applicant's site up there.
I'm not there, can you, you got a pointer or something? Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, right there where it says applicant's site.
Yeah, where it says applicant's site.
Yeah, okay.
We're here to help. So, again, this is a proposal for up to fifty children, ages two and a half to twelve. The site has a large parking lot in existence. Parking lot will hold up to seventy-two cars. Based on our calculations, requirement for the childcare center in this location would be for eleven. And so they meet the parking requirement. I think you're aware from the earlier application discussion, the requirement for having an outdoor play area, which would be, which would be provided as well. There's basically the floor plan of the inside, it shows they would have a number of classroom spaces in there. Again, this site, based on its, the building size, the amount of parking available, meets the city's zoning requirements in terms of compliance for getting a use permit, or at least a request from City Council. This went before the Planning Commission at their meeting in July, July fifth, and the Planning Commission by a vote of five to zero recommended approval. Be glad to answer any questions you may have on this application.
Councilman Chair.
Just to comment, you know, I ride by, I rode by this one too, and... Well, I've been doing that since nineteen ninety-nine, I'm sorry. You know, it has a sign that says welcome, and then right beside it says, no trespassing, violation will be prosecuted. So I didn't know whether to go on there or not. So I stayed outside the gate, the gate was closed. So I guess my question is about, they got plenty of room, they got a long lane to turn around and all that. I guess as the egress and ingress, if that gate is open or closed during the day, how that... Maybe it's not a question for you, but how is that going to work?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Yeah.
I would mention this case, you know, this as a, as a church-operated daycare center would not go, would not be required to get licensing from the state. They are exempt from that requirement.
Is there someone here? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Did I just go by there at a bad time ma'am, or was that gate always locked?
Oh, the gate is normally closed at night. In the morning, it may be open, closed some mornings, but periodically it does get open, yes.
I guess if people are picking up and dropping off, and there was no... If people are picking up and dropping off?
Oh, it would be opening.
And then no one manning that gate, how did...
No, it would be open. It would be open in the morning. It won't be closed until they leave to the daycare's...
So it's open all day?
It would be open all day when the daycare starts, yes.
Okay, because I went by there, wasn't it? Okay.
And sure, you would be welcome if you came, you say no trespassing.
I wasn't sure, so, because the one sign said welcome, and right beside it said no trespassing, you'll be prosecuted, so I backed my car up and...
It's possible a reason that the no trespassing sign is there. We have had people to go in the back of the church when the church was closed, you know, when service was over late at night, and we have found some things in the back of the church. So I'm sure that's why the no trespassing sign was put up.
You have a beautiful lot, it's a lot, it's a great piece of land.
Thank you so much.
And the driveway and everything is very impressive. I didn't drive down there, but I did look to see...
Yes.
To see how to turn around and everything would work. So all that appears to work fine. Just concerned about people may get in and out, because if there's an emergency happens or whatever, are people going to get in and out of there with that, with that gate? Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns for the applicant? Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Our speaker is Mr. Clifford Comback.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. Okay, now it's my turn to talk about my enhanced quality of life, because I live in this neighborhood. I live across the street from this church. I live across the street from this church. While this church is 100% opposite of the conditions of the previous applicant, the issue I have is, if you put the other picture back up, if you could, the... Or the actual... The one showing the layout of the land. Okay. As you can see, that there's two streets that basically dead-end to the entrance to this church. I live on Magnolia, which is one to the right, and then you have Bamboo, that's there off of Town Point Road. And I'm retired, so I have nothing to do but count cars. So I've looked at the traffic pattern for the last week, and during the day, Monday through Friday, it averages about eight cars that go past my house. Okay, now, the applicant has said they're gonna keep 50 children and have 10 employees. So 50 times two, drop them off and pick them up, and then 10 employees, that's 20. So now, I can go, depending on which street the people go to, to get to the church entrance, now I can have a possibility of 120 cars a day going down my street. I don't really understand why that land was never developed as part of Armstead Forest, but it's... It would be like, "Mr. Mayor, I've been in your neighborhood." It would be like putting a church or any... Anything at the very end of your street. It's not a real good location, but I can't hold you all responsible for the sins of past councils. But I'm really concerned with the traffic, because now I have to worry about it on Sunday and whatever nights of the week they do their services. But now I'm gonna have it Monday through Friday, and it's... Both of those streets are fairly short, and the speed limit is posted on both streets at 25 mile an hour. But speeding is a concern. So I'm gonna go from eight cars a day to a possibility of 120 cars a day. As I said in my previous remarks, there's 92 daycare centers in Portsmouth, 28 in Churchland. I don't think there's a shortage of these. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I see on this one, and I was on the wrong one earlier, so I'll go back to the playground. I see where a playground will be designed for all ages. I guess, Mr. Baldwin, do these playgrounds have to meet the same safety standards?
Yes, we will put these through a site plan review. We'll have to do that.
Okay. And it also says that children who are eligible for kindergarten will not be allowed to attend. I don't... I don't understand that piece of it. Perhaps the applicant can...
That's another question for the applicant.
Can answer that. I guess my question would be, why wouldn't they be allowed to attend? And maybe you can expound, too, on the educational component. I see you mentioned that as well.
Yes. Your question about the playground was what?
Yeah, the playground, and also reading on the application here, it says, "Children eligible for kindergarten will not be allowed to attend."
Oh, no. It says... It states that, you know, there are some kids who can't go to school at age five because of their birthday. So they are... They would be allowed at the Christian Academy. We would take in those ones. That's what...
So kids who...
Yes, from two and a half to five.
Do not qualify for kindergarten.
Yes, that were not qualified to go.
I got you.
Yes.
Also, the educational component, you'll be teaching the kids...
From the backup program, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you did not get an opportunity to speak on this item and you would like to speak, please come forth, state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Thank you all. My name is Sherri Lampkin, and I live at 3700 Bamboo Road on the other road. Just to let you know, the last meeting I came to, I had a petition from the residents. I went and talked to all the residents, which is a very small community, and we're a very quiet community. Many had concerns, again, with the traffic. That's the biggest concern that we have. I have had the privilege of growing my whole entire life. I'm now living with my parents, helping them out. And I can tell you that there's been a re-violation in our community, in our little, small community. We have children that are back, and when I grew up, and the same thing for them coming in, they get to ride their bikes, ride their skateboards, because we are just a little square off of Town Point Road, which is a very busy road. It has now become heavily traveled. So those children only have Bamboo and Magnolia to play on, and there is no other area but that for them. So the big thing for us is the traffic, and there is a concern with the speed. We know as residents on Wednesday nights and Sundays that the children do usually stay in. It's just, we know that, we can live with that, but as Mr. Clifford said, the traffic will be increased through Monday through Friday. So that's one of our big concerns, and it will change just drastically if they reach their capacity of 50 children, so...
Thank you.
Seeing no more speakers, this public hearing is closed. We're in need of a motion.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved, five to one. Z-1601, Craddock and West Craddock. The applicant has requested that this item be deferred to the September 13, 2016, meeting.
Okay.
We're in need of a motion.
Move for deferral.
We have a motion and a second in this... We have a motion and a second in this item. Oh, you're voting electronically, I'm sorry. Okay. This item will be deferred with a vote of five with one abstention.
All right, very good.
City Managers Report, 16-250, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Subsection 2C of City Ordinance 2016-34. To adjust the revenue sources for the FY 2016 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund Budget by decreasing the fund balance line item by $1,730... $1,000,000... Oh, I'm sorry. $1,73,645, and increasing the state Categorical Aid Line Item by $1,73,645. Vision principle, efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers. We're in need of a motion?
Please approve a second.
We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six-zero, 16-251. Adoption of an ordinance to appropriate the sum of $1,554... No, I cannot talk. $1,554,092 in the instructional classification of the overall and first quarter FY 2017 textbook fund budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools. Vision principle, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six-zero, 16-252. Adoption of an ordinance accepting $33,081.42 of federal asset forfeiture funds received from the United States Drug Enforced Administration and appropriating said funds to the FY 2017 Asset Forfeiture Fund for the use by the Sheriff's Department. Vision principle, efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six-zero, 16-253. Adoption of an ordinance to accept $128,820.73 received via the Circuit and General District Courts, and to appropriate said amount in the FY 2017 General Fund for the use by the Sheriff's Office for exercise equipment and other items needed to support the Sheriff's Office Training Academy. Vision principles, efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers.
Mr. Cherry, got a...
Yeah, I think I saw Captain Cherry. I had a question for the Sheriff's Department. Captain Cherry, back there? Somebody?
Yes, sir. If he's the spokesperson. Good evening. Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is a lot of equipment. I know you have some equipment in there already, I thought, for exercise, and I remember being said that this facility was barely being used now because of the cutbacks that didn't have the people over there. So I guess I'm just kinda wondering, $128,000 for equipment, are y'all turning that into a gym or...
The facility is being used, but I would like to defer these comments to Captain Earnhardt, who is a fiscal officer, and she can answer your questions better than I can.
All right.
I hope.
Thank you. Do you understand what I'm... What my question is?
Yes, sir. It's not just for exercise equipment. It's also, as you know, we have taken over the lease for the next five years for the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office Training Academy. So we will be paying for the utilities out of those funds and to help offset the lease rent payments every month also.
Okay, so this is incorrect, what I'm reading here?
Yes. It's not just... Well, it says exercise equipment and other items.
Yeah.
But that's what it's for.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I guess that's a lot of exercise equipment.
No, it's not just for that, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Need a motion?
Please approve a second.
We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, six-zero, new business. 16-254, Boards and Commissions. Councilman Edmonds.
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
16-255, Items Submitted by Councilmembers.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna defer tonight from my normal talk about the arts and activities to talk about a much more serious topic. Recently, we heard the news that our Board of Directors of our Redevelopment and Housing Authority elected to dismiss their executive director who had a 44-year career with the Housing Authority, and I think many of us were shocked and appalled and upset with the disrespect that was afforded to Mr. Short. I've said publicly before, I thought the entire board needed to be replaced. There is a process for which that has to happen, called for by the Commonwealth of Virginia. We can't just pull a Donald Trump and say, "You're fired," as much as I'd like to. But I would like to say this publicly. I would like for my colleagues to consider this topic for discussion, and if we want to continue to proceed with the public process that is required by the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. My colleague, I agree with what she's saying. There was an opportunity tonight to discuss the board's performance and the way things were handling. As the public is aware, HUD issued some findings over a month ago. And the normal procedure is to discuss performance of appointees, just like staff appointees, in a closed session. And it's been my experience in 18 years on this council that when a council member suggests an item that they would like to see discussed in closed session, that that is done. That courtesy was not extended to me, and I think Vice Mayor Simmons and Councilman Meeks agreed with that. Had a call from our attorney saying that it had been recommended by Mayor Wright and Verbina Askew not to discuss the board's performance because of some criminal investigation. Well, I found... My first question to the city attorney was, "Did you get that call?" He said, "No, I just was conveying information from the mayor and Ms. Askew." I find that highly unusual. The attorney informed me tonight that they did not approve putting it on the closed session to discuss it. I'm appalled at that, also very disturbed that we have a city attorney, and that city attorney's duties should be performed by the city attorney, not by the mayor, not by Verbina Askew, who, by the way, HUD has already informed the Housing Authority that they're not paying her legal bill, that the taxpayers will have to pay that. So we need somebody else to look into that situation. I would advocate the state police doing exactly that, because I don't like what was conveyed by the mayor via Verbina Askew about some criminal investigation. I was born at night, but it was not last night. I do know when the feds do a criminal investigation, I don't think Verbina Askew and Mayor Wright would be the ones that they'd be tipping off as to a criminal investigation. If there is one, the members of this council should know about it. We should know about it via the city attorney in a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Dr. Edmonds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must admit that I'm appalled and shocked at the way that Mr. Short was dismissed. And I called to try to check out why it happened the way that it did, and trying to see if issues could be changed or challenged. Because that board has legally an attorney, I found out that there is only so much that we could do or say in that regard. However, I don't think we ought to just let it drop, because I feel like what Mr. Short has brought to the table over the many years... He's an integritist man. The PRHA has been a stellar... In a stellar position for the city of Portsmouth as far as being a shining star for redevelopment and housing authority. However, I also know that when people disagree, you can't throw stones for stones. That's not the way we operate. But I hope that somehow or another, that through some legal ramifications, that we will be able to get the ear and some solution to make this transition for Mr. Short easier, such as he was attempting to turn in his papers of retirement, but somehow or another that didn't happen. But all... Some of these things are just items that you pick up. But I think somehow, some way, the situation of the way that he was dismissed needs to be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Mr. Short.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to ditto what my friend Bishop just said, you know, I think that could have been and should have been handled differently. Bishop has been working tirelessly the last few days, I know, because I've communicated several times, trying to find a resolution to this, and we both made some phone calls. And we learned, as he said, that this particular... This board, like I agree with him... like, I agree with him, we don't just throw everything out, because of this particular board, we don't have the ability to overturn or override what they, what they have done. And if we, if we did, we'd be making a motion tonight to, you know, to, to allow Mr. Short to retire at the end of the month, as we, as we wish, but that's not the case, as I've been informed by legal, but because of, this is one of those boards that doesn't have the opportunity to be appealed to the city council. That in itself, Mayor, is a little bit troubling, so what, what I would like for us to do, and, and I'm not necessarily saying that, that this is, this is, this is the reason to throw them out, 'cause there, 'cause there's, we know there's some things we probably don't know and some things out there that are happening that we don't know about, but this is an opportunity that I think we oughta take to look at our public housing model, period. Public housing model, we have the day started in nineteen thirty-eight, if, from what I'm told. So, is that the correct model for two thousand and sixteen? I know the manager's been thinking about it and probably talking about it, but I think this would be, if your colleagues agree, an opportunity for the manager and staff and whoever to look at the model and see if it was the right model for us. Everybody doesn't have that same model, be, be, because there ought to be an appeal to any process, and it, and that, there is no appeal to this process, and we, as the elected leaders, the Congress of Portsmouth, we're limited in anything. I'm als- I'm also understanding by, by, by the, by the, by legal counsel that the process Mr. Simmons talked about, that if it's not undertaken, undertaken in the right way for the right reason, it can be problematic, be, because you, you just can't, because you don't like a decision somebody made, you just can't throw them out. They have to break some kind of rule, break some kind of law, do some, do something, a- and, and I've been informed that everything they did was within their legal rights. So, so, so we gotta take a look at the model that we have and see if it's the right model and move from there, and, and so we won't have to experience this for the, the Short family that I, that I respect highly and dearly, or anybody else in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Cherry on the point, and I think the city manager would verify this. I've asked some months ago that we needed to look at another model, as some of our sister cities, Hampton being one, that they took the operation of, of their housing authority in a house. I don't know how that has worked out for them. They, they've stayed with it, so I must assume that it's worked out well, but I think the city manager said that she would, uh, report back to us at some particular time on, on how that is working for Hampton. But I would say that board and commission members serve at the pleasure of council. I don't think that has changed, and what has changed apparently is the way we go about discussing it, and I stand by what I said earlier, that we, we need, we need another party to come in and, and look at what's going on. I'm disturbed the way that was conveyed and the manner in which it was conveyed. We only have one city attorney, and, and I'm very disturbed that apparently he's not aware of all this, these going ons, so I stand by my earlier statement.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna concur with Councilman Cherry, actually, and suggest that we get on this sooner than later. I've had several conversations with Dr. Catherine Lamburg, who is the Director of the HUD office in Richmond for the Commonwealth of Virginia. She has offered to come meet with us, the city council, and explain to us some of the options that we have, work with Dr. Patton, and I think this is something we need to be on tomorrow, much sooner than later. I think this is critical, and this is another black eye on the city. We've, we've had findings by HUD, and clearly there's some serious mismanagement going on.
Right, and now the, Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah. Anything that we must do or think about doing, certainly we have to make sure that there are no litigation things that would happen to cause some stirring of the waters. So, yes, we do have to look at it. Yes, we do need to change it, but we shouldn't be hasty without doing all the due diligence that goes with it, such as getting somebody from HUD and other things that we need to get straight in our own backyard. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moody, and we're gonna move on on this subject. Go ahead, sir.
Well, one thing, in acting hasty, we all read about the seven million dollars that somebody threw their hands up and, without finding the answer to that, that somehow seven million dollars was missing. Finding the facts after the statement was made indicated that, that was not the case, and in the interim, that impunes people's reputations. And I think before we, we go out and make statements like that, they, they need to be backed up with facts at the time the statement is made. Thank you.
Mr. Meeks?
One thing, I was, I was one of the liaisons with Bishop Edmonds with the Housing Authority, and, you know, I work with Mr. Short, and very professional. I also talked to the HUD lady, and she recommended, I mean, she put a lot of, a lot, she said a lot of good things about the city, especially the Housing Authority, and said we probably have one of the best in the state and top five in the nation. And the thing that bothers me is with this instance here, we had a lot of young people on that board. Not saying they're not qualified to do the job, but I don't think they had all the history. I mean, you got a product of the Housing Authority now running the Housing Authority. Who more can see, understand what those people go through on a day-to-day basis? So, when this young board fired them the way they did, that, that, that was troubling, because we really don't have a exercise or, you know, to fire the whole board. We have to follow this process. And I think when we start looking back into it, I think we have to give ourselves some type of ability to correct the wrongs, because these people aren't getting paid to do this job, they're volunteers. When you got a seasoned man like Mr. Short, and you let all that historical knowledge go out the window, because a knee, knee-jerk reaction, all right, that, before they, I, I feel like, because they were appointed by this council, they should at least went to the liaisons or to the mayor or vice mayor or even the seasoned veterans that we have here on, on council. None of that was done. We never even had an opportunity to say, "Hold on, let's look at this," or see, you know, we never had that choice. And I think going forward, I think we need to implement that some way with the council having a voice.
All right. All right, look like we've exhausted it, and then let me just wrap up by saying that we should always understand our roles and responsibilities as a council and doing our due diligence and not making knee-jerk reactions, as you just accused that board of doing. And I think we owe it to that board and those professionals to complete whatever it is they're doing, especially if there's an investigation. Would you not agree? Until those findings are complete and until we get the proper data, it probably would be prudent for us to not take any action in the middle of an investigation. And I think that goes on with any investigation, because you don't wanna be accused of tampering or doing something that caused things to go one way or the other. So, I don't disagree with what my colleagues here are saying. We have rules and guidelines, and when things are being handled and in decency and order, whether we like the results or not, we have to wait and let that process complete itself. And then, once that's done, we can then exert our authority as a council as it pertains to board members. But to do that prior to getting information, I think is irresponsible, and I think the information that we've all put out here tonight is probably helpful, but it doesn't do anything to excuse the fact that there is an investigation going on, and we need to stay out of it until it's complete. Okay, with that, are there any other comments? Dr. Edmonds? Yeah, Mike, sir?
This is on a different subject. There was a boat that, in the Crystal Lake area, that engine failed. We don't have any gasoline engines, our, the electrical engines, and Portsmouth's finest was called, the Fire Department, the Victorius Station. They came by, they assessed the situation, didn't have to call for another boat, but let nature do its thing and get it closer to the edge, and they threw them a line and brought the boat back to the boat that it belonged to. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, for that. Let me wrap up with recognizing, I see Ms. Linda Ridenhour here. Where's Ms. Ridenhour? Is she still here? Would you please stand? Ms. Ridenhour serves as our representative on the TCC board, and each year she does an outstanding job. Would you please come up? Each year she does an outstanding job representing the city and our interests and gives us a report verbally or written, and this year she gave us a nice written report, and I complimented her earlier before the meeting, and she doesn't wanna talk, but I wanna recognize your professionalism and the work that you're doing for this city on that board. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things here that you put into your report here that I think is, is vital. Just last month, TCC was identified as the number-one community college in Virginia for two thousand and sixteen for high number of transfer students, service to military-related students, and support of family through our Child Development Center. They were also the second-largest provider of undergraduate education in Virginia and the largest provider of higher education and workforce services in Hampton Roads, and finally, the fourteenth-largest two-year community college in the United States. That's impressive, those statistics. In this past spring, they graduated a total of two thousand graduates, and nine hundred walked across stage to receive their associate's degrees or workforce certifications. The ages ranged from twenty-one to forty years of age, and one eighty-year-old woman graduated. And finally, thirty-three percent of those graduates were veterans or members of a veteran family. Forty-five percent of those graduates obtained degrees to qualify them to transfer into four-year colleges, and at the commencement, I believe Senator Cosgrove was the guest speaker. Ms. Ridenhour, I wanna thank you for this report. Rarely do we get a detailed report from members that we appoint to boards, and you have a passion for education, you have always had that passion, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing here, and, and thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Okay, Dr. Patton?
Mayor, members of city council, Dr. Woodhouse will be presenting during the public work session on the twenty-third, an annual port, which she indicated to me is required since we are partners with them, and it will be in our five o'clock session.
Okay, very good. All right, Madam Clerk?
Sixteen dash two fifty-six, report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hall. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm Bernadette Hall, City Embudsman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen. There were two non-agenda speakers. Both speakers required action by staff. Michael Thornton advised city council of two concerns. The first issue was debris located in the ditch at Oak Street and George Washington Highway. The second concern was a tree had fallen on a fence at thirteen forty-two Marshall Avenue. Staff reviewed both locations, and all issues were unfounded. Antonette Franklin advised that the twenty-four-hundred block of Lansing Avenue had been milled about two weeks ago but not yet paved. Weather permitting, this area was scheduled to be paved the week of August first. I spoke with the Public Works Director this afternoon, and due to some additional repair work that was needed on the road, the paving is now scheduled to begin on August eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, weather permitting. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Sixteen dash two fifty-seven, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Ron Evans.
Evening, I'm, I'm Ron Evans, and I reside in the Rollingwood section. On behalf of myself and thirty-one others that are on the petition, we felt the need to be proactive on the following issue. On July twenty-second of this year, the house at twenty-three Mohawk was demolished by the new owner, who then proceeded to clear the lot of all trees and vegetation. What was once an idyllic setting with massive trees and a large ravine now looks like a torn, excuse me, now looks like a tornado touchdown. The owner had the necessary permits, which were never posted, but we feel that with something of this magnitude, the public should have, should have input on the land disturbance portion. It is a certainty that the next step will be to fill in this massive ravine for only about twenty-five percent at most of the land is usable the way it sits. We are opposed to this for the following reasons. The low area is a natural drain that flows into a creek that supports wildlife. There are no curbs and gutters on Mohawk or Mohegan, and the filling in would create yet another flood-prone area in the city. The sheer volume and weight of the truck traffic would not only disrupt people's lives but ruin our roads and substructures that we, as taxpayers, paid for. These roads are not designed for the amount and weight of these vehicles. It is estimated that it would take sixty-five tandem dump trucks weighing about sixty-four thousand each just to raise the ground level one foot. It is estimated that it would take from three hundred and twenty-four to four hundred and fifty-four loads and take eleven to fifteen days. I might also add, three logging trucks worth of trees were utilized that should not even have been allowed in the neighborhood. Another concern is groundwater contamination. Who will monitor the type of fill? Will you allow the ecosystem to take yet another hit? How would you like this happening in your neighborhood? If approved, there, there should be some major conditions in place at no cost to the taxpayers. We feel that all of our concerns are legitimate, and ask that you please don't allow this to happen, because if it does, all other neighborhoods will be in jeopardy. Copies of our concerns were also given to planning and permitting last Tuesday, and I just presented the sergeant-at-arms with some more signatures. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Evans. I think the vice mayor and myself have certainly spoke to you about that. I've driven by the site. I was surprised at the, the depth of that ravine since the trees were removed, and it, it is concerning. You're, you're right, but staff is also very much aware of it, and it's not a whole lot we can do, because no plan has been submitted. It's hard to oppose something or support something that you haven't seen yet, but it is on, I know, city manager Patton's radar, as well as other staff members, so we'll, we'll be keeping a pulse on it and monitoring the situation as it develops. You mentioned the weight of the trucks. I know some streets over that way do have weight limits on it.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Patton, may, perhaps staff can look at those streets and make sure they're protected with, with weight limits, because they are residential streets. In fact, I saw right in front of the lot where some of the street has already been damaged, so we, we might wanna check into that as well. But thanks for making us aware of it, and staff will keep us posted and monitor the situation.
Yes, yes, sir. I'd just like to add, on city, there's a no-truck sign on City Park, there's a no-truck sign on Elm, but for some reason, there's not one on Chawan, and I swear there used to be one. I've been there a quarter century, and I swear there used to be one there. And there's also one in Oregon, the one on City Park is a ten-thousand gross vehicle weight. Even a small truck weighs just over, empty dump truck weighs over ten thousand pounds. Even a small truck weighs just over, empty dump truck weighs over 10,000 pounds.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. In today's newspaper, there is a public notice for a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, August the 23rd, at 7:00 PM with respect to the proposed adoption of the city council on a resolution to authorize the city to contract a debt and issue a general obligation, um, qualified zone academy bond of the city or notes in the amount of over $6 million to finance the cost of the rehabilitation and repair of certain of the public schools in the city and the cost of issuing the bonds. We, the people, are not going to give our consent to be forced into involuntary servitude by submitting to the bondage of debt. Debt is simply borrowing against the future. It exchanges a present advantage for a future obligation. It will require not only the return of the original advance of funds, but a substantial compensation to the creditor for the use of his money. In the budget overview, it reads, "The city provides general government services to meet the needs of the citizens, including police and fire protection." In the preliminary budget for the year 2017, for Public Safety Business Center organizational charter reads, "Total permanent positions, zero. Police department position, dash. E911 position, dash. Fire rescue and emergency position, dash." I wrote a FOIA request for the total number of permanent positions for these safety personnel, and I received a notice that it would cost me $97 for two hours of research. The mismanagement of public funds is beyond belief. May the 3rd, 2013, Virginia pilot. Mayor wants $5 million for the rec center. August the 28th, 2014, 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard, taking off the tax rolls of over $78,000 per year. September the 17th, 801 Water Street, paid for the city, two, over $2,850. In addition, took over $40,000 off the yearly tax rolls. Then the South Norfolk Jordan Bridge deal that should be paying Portsmouth over 40, $435,000 annually. The school division is the fourth level of government. The board members don't know how to manage the taxpayers' money either. One pillar of liberty is this, cause to effect. Every personal and group loss of liberty has a cause. Things don't just happen. Looking for the root cause instead of the effect will give more liberty. Not, not our elected, they want to bind the people down with chains of debt. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Our final speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, our city manager and staff. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the Parkview section of the city. Tonight, I'd like to come to talk to you a little bit about Mother Nature and, of course, what she, what we have to sometimes live with or work with, and, uh, most importantly, we can't live without her. But it's flooding, and the street flooding, of course, it has happened in the last few summer storms that we've had, particularly in downtown. Uh, as your president to the Old Town Business Association, we have brought this to, uh, a head at this point to talk about how, uh, some of the streets along, um, High Street, Washington Street, Crawford, Middle Street, London, County Street can be overwhelmed by, by Mother Nature's force of, of rainwater and not get away, uh, from the streets as fast as they should, but more importantly, uh, seem to collect a little bit more prevalent than other areas in the city. Uh, that being said, we are concrete jungle. We do have impervious surfaces that have to be obviously maintained on a regular basis, not only on the surface but also underneath the surface, which I think is probably one of our most problematic issues. Um, it has been obviously known that, uh, that storm drains generally are segmented concrete pipes, which means that there's obviously either a break every four to six or eight feet, and those pipes are obviously subject to roots that are growing into them from trees. One of those issues was, was taken care of along Crawford, excuse me, along High Street and Crawford Parkway about two and a half years ago. Well, the roots have grown back in, which, 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 of course, is causing backups or, or standing water more prevalent on Middle Street and also seeping into the auditorium of the Sports Hall of Fame on a regular basis now. So that is needing to be looked at. But going back down to Washington and High Street being the lowest part of the city, uh, we would like to, of course, as the business association, work with the city on mitigating that possibility of creating a better drainage system there, of course, identifying where the pipes are obviously blocked. Uh, we also like to encourage maybe the, not, uh, the, um, the elimination of plastic bags that are being used in businesses all over the city that ultimately become a, a way to block the, the, the storm drains when they hit the street, uh, considering also looking at future improvements that will create cisterns under the street. These things are obviously things that we need to look at and look at now, um, and then also looking at street closures when that road becomes, uh, overflooded, and that the trucks or vehicles that pass through those, uh, intersections, of course, swamp our businesses on High Street, and if the streets were closed, we want to make sure that they're closed properly, uh, not me putting the signs out in the middle of the rain with an umbrella, and I've done that three times out of the five storms this year myself, uh, to stop the traffic from traveling through those areas. But again, I appreciate your opportunity to work with the group and work with the city to mitigate these issues.
Thank you very much, Tony. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Tony, as, as you know, I was a victim of Washington Street flooding. A car got flooded, but, uh, I think staff is certainly aware of it, but, you know, visitors coming to the city, uh, and parking there, they probably aren't aware of it and how quickly that water can, uh, reach flood stage. I would suggest that we look into posting some type of signage there that, uh, to make people aware in, in heavy, uh, periods of rain that that area is subject to flooding. I think if we don't do that, uh, there's going to be some liability. On the night that my car got flooded, and it was high and dry when I parked there, hour later, the water was, uh, almost up to my waist.
Yes.
Uh, I'm told there were 18 vehicles that were flooded that night. So I would like, uh, first, concurrence from my colleagues, I, I think we need to, uh, mark those areas and warn people, uh, that it's subject to flooding. And, uh, I see my colleague, uh, might have a problem with that, but, uh, I'm telling you, there's going to be some liability there because the insurance, my insurance company, State Farm, uh, asked that question, uh, was there signage there? Answer was no. Uh, and I'm a local, and I'm aware that it floods, but by the time that I walked from Washington Street down to end of High Street and Vice Mayor Simmons tried to give me a ride back, we couldn't get within a couple of blocks of it because of the water had already reached flood level. And I had to walk, uh, to my car in, in almost waist-deep water. Then I had to walk in waist-deep water in the middle of High Street till I reached high ground, uh, and not only the car was flooded, a, a brand-new cellphone was ruined. But, uh, visitors to the city, that would certainly leave a bad taste in their mouth, and I know we have business owners there, the drugstore being one, the antique shop being one. Uh, I think they're getting tired of putting new carpet in and having customers, uh, get called in the flood, so I think we need some signage and some warnings in, in those areas.
Vice Mayor?
I was just going to comment just more for the benefit of the public than anything else.
Thank you, sir. You can say.
There is a, um, there is an ongoing dialogue between Dr. Patton's staff and the business owners in that area, but there is a fine line about putting a sign up. If I live on Washington or High, I don't necessarily want a sign in front of my house that says it floods because then when I'm trying to sell you my house, you go, oh, it floods here? Um, so there's a real fine line of, and I think they're really looking at that because of that very reason.
Well, I think, I think, uh, if you sell your house to somebody without making them aware of that's a flood zone, you're...
That's a problem, too.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be...
But I think they're working on it.
That's gonna be a real big problem.
All right. All minds clear. We're adjourned. Good night.